Outstanding. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the board of selectmen. Today is Tuesday, July 15, 2025. Time now is 7:00 PM. If we can begin the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one government, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Any public comments? Obviously, we have a few folks here for the fire department, so we're probably going to ask a few questions of you, especially the chiefs and Chair of the Board of Fire. Any other public comments? Okay, any correspondence? I would accept a motion to approve the board of selectmen's minute, excuse me, special meeting minutes in July 9, 2025.
July 9.
Sorry, June 9, thank you. And we have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would accept a motion again to approve the board of selectmen's regular meeting minutes from July 1, 2025. So.
I was out.
Okay, so I'll make the motion.
I'm second.
Outstanding. Any discussion?
No.
All parents say aye.
Aye.
Pretensions?
Well, what objection?
Motion carries. Okay, first up. Consideration of a tax abatement for firefighters. And I know this has been back and forth with the fire commission. Did I miss one? Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass my report because this may take a little longer. And since Brian is giving ice cream, I'm gonna go. Consideration of tax made from firefighters. Thank you, Fire Commissioner, too. We do have the information from the Board of Fire. Did you want to add anything as Chairman there, Mr. Cooney?
I did not.
Okay.
Just represented that is what we discussed. We discussed it for many months. We're just gonna test it.
Sure.
We support, we support an incentive of some sort.
Right. I did, I did kind of have, I guess, just a couple of questions because, so when I was reading through this. Basically, it would be maximum a year or two instead of going up graduated to 10. And the difference, too, is that we would add those with 25 years of total experience who've retired. That was in the other addition. So I guess for discussion. Right now, with respect to who qualifies, is it just anybody who's a member of the department right now just qualifies for the tax abatement?
No, there are thresholds for.
Okay, what are the thresholds? I know it's, I need you recommended five percent here.
I would defer that information to one chairman.
You have it on our standings. Thank you.
For Bethel, it is a combination of 100 calls and your staffing hours.
How many calls do you guys average a year? Like, what's an average year?
2,000.
Sorry.
Calls do we average a year between?
Fire calls. Dispatch every day, 546 wired, 1,000 seven for five a day downtown. So you're gonna require 100 fire calls to be eligible to out of 100 calls. Well, I mean, if they're, if they're both ambulance, but you have some people who are just firefighters, right?
Right.
I'm assuming you have some people that are just EMTs, correct? So if you run 600 calls a year on average, you're looking at them to do, what does that come out to? You're looking for like 15, 18%? So you're trying to hit them for call volume?
Brian, I'm sorry, my ear can just right.
I'm saying, if you're saying that you make 100 calls. So for a firefighter who's just a firefighter, if you do 600 calls, that comes out to a little over 15%, correct?
Correct.
15, 16, because 15% would be 900, right? No, yeah, 600, 10% is 60, yeah. So I mean, it's like 15%.
You can clarify that a little bit. We also, we have people staff. And let's just show them the commissioner here. Is that you can staff day and night and catch calls and then go home and there's five calls in a row. So what we proposed is that some of the hours have to contribute towards a call. And it's like four hours of lost calls, four hours of standby staffing to keep one call, five hours of staffing or standby to keep one call. To allow the people who, you know, do come down and staff on a regular basis, day and night and weekends to achieve their time. And we found that it works. First of all, the reason it works, we get the apparatus out the door faster because they're in the front. The other thing is when we meet national standards, like the NPA 1710, which covers voluntary combination departments. Where they establish thresholds for how quickly should get out the door and how often you should keep those three. That staffing helps achieve that. So by having credit for staffing, it's gonna help us get people to a call and yet you can.
Right now, you're suggesting it's 100 calls, either ambulance or fire. But with ambulance, a lot of that, what you say, 1,500 calls, a lot of that is like during the day when it's the staffing company doing it.
Yeah, we look at it and actually it's about 50/50.
Okay.
Yeah, and 1,735 calls.
Okay, so, okay.
And this year's figures are right now are mirroring the last. The ambulance center. Fortunately, on a fireside, we're way ahead of last year. I had just been written 700.
So is it easier for an EMT to get 100 calls than it is a firefighter to get 100 calls?
You can come in during the day and bribe the staffing agency if you like. And we do have people that do that. A lot of our younger members who are going to school, that stay nights, they wind up at the house and they come and hang around during the day. Because we have a good call volume during the day, it allows them that opportunity to increase their skills. So we do get people around. And that also holds true on weekends. Let's say. My friend, who recently staffed on Saturdays and could allow other members and family to watch the kids and then she will be staffed. So I mean, there's, there's a lot of ways to get that happen. If we want to keep that function.
Yes, one question I would have, and I think it's something that we would have to think about is, you know, I understand if we have someone from out of town who's currently on the fire department. But my fear would be that, you know. Surrounding towns that don't have an abatement are gonna say, well, I'm gonna go to Bethel because they're gonna pay $2,000 by taxes. And I don't know if that's really 100% in the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish here. So I think I would want to see, obviously grandfather, your current members, to know what I'm saying. But I don't, I don't know if it's a great idea for us to use that sort of place. You know, people in towns that don't have it, they're not over here. I don't know if you understand what I'm saying with that, in respect of that, but let's kind of like.
Mr. Fugger, I can address that.
But, well, being on the fire commission, there was also a discussion of doing some type of incentive program. Because we have quite a few out of town firemen and a lot of young firemen who have no tax liability to the town. So one of the things that came up in the meeting was to possibly pay the fireman that $2,000 and they would also probably receive a 1099 for that also.
But do you understand what I'm saying, Rich? Like, I understand if you have a business owner in town who lives out of town, it's great that they decide to volunteer in town because they're here. You know, if you have a guy who works in a tree company or something like that, they're here. I get it. I just don't want to get to like, we're just enticing people whose town might not offer it. And they're not gonna volunteer in that town and they're gonna come to Bethel because, well, I'll get $2,000 if I go to Bethel. They'll pay renting or whatever other volunteer fire department, they'll pay that down, 2,000, so.
So essentially, I, I thought of that and, and as I sit here, there, I mean, one, one good example is a tree guy who works in Danbury sitting there, who's the chief of Stony Hill. I mean, I, I, no, I know, I, I just think I, I understand where you're coming from.
Right. I mean, if it's a business owner, it's a business owner. You know, they're in town, I get it.
But I guess what I'm saying is. If, if we incentivize people to come from out of town, it's not necessarily a bad thing because we need members. Like, we need bodies who are gonna be here to actually make the calls. Or, or should we like be somehow targeting Bethel people, to your point? I see where you're going, like.
Again, if it's a business person who's in town during the day, I, I just would want to see some sort of criteria. You know, I wouldn't want, you know, someone who works in New York City who's like, oh, you know, I can get $2,000 if I go to Bethel, I could do my staffing, make a couple of calls. You know, again, if you have a local business owner, someone owns a floral shop, someone owns a repair shop, they're in town. You know, they're here, they're gonna answer calls.
During the day.
They're gonna answer calls during the day.
I have a struggle to see that being a problem. It's just my personal opinion, right?
I just, I don't play with assumptions. You know me well enough. That's not me. You know, I don't like to assume anything. I just know that, you know, things happen and, you know, realistically, I want to do something. Why are you shaking your head, Tom? What's the matter?
I just don't know how you can do that from a legal standpoint. I know you live out of town, but you own a business in Bethel or work in Bethel, then you can get it, but.
Why?
I don't know. I just.
There's no legality against that. I mean, you're entering into a contract, Tom. It's not like a municipality with a union. You're not, I'm just saying you're not unionized. And, and I'm not trying to pay, I already said it, if they're already here, I understand grandfather and all. But there's gotta be some criteria. So I don't think it's really that big a deal.
I still want to time, ladies first?
Hi, thank you.
I'll get you, Chief.
With several, many of our out of town members are from Danbury. Danbury does not have a volunteer EMS, so if they want to participate in that, they have to go out of town. And a lot of the firemen that we get from Danbury. They come here because they don't get that many calls in Danbury and they want to be active.
Chief, yes.
In our bylaws, we have a statement, you have to live within a certain file radius to be considered a legitimate fireman. And then in there, we also have the staff room program where you can only staff. So it's all, it's on an hour basis based on you volunteering to do X, Y, and Z hours. Correct? You know, there's no. We can't take somebody from Brookfield that lives off of 133, to be honest.
What's the, what's the radius?
It's like 33 or 5 miles of the road.
So 3 paramiles.
Doug, I have a question. I'm asking the chief first.
The, in reference to state, well, people coming in from, from out of town or. Why would they come here and echo someplace else? City Danbury last night, as you certainly asked, the incentive program for the volunteers, they're going to city council. Two weeks, and they don't pass it. Very similar to this. So it'd be comparable. But when you look at all the other towns around here, their incentive programs exceed what we're looking at here. Having that chief in town a couple of times, Woodbury, South, especially, their benefits far exceed what we're talking about. You know, forward aligned to New York City, I mean, sky's the limit. They actually have programs that after 15, excuse me, after 20 years, it's stipends for the rest of their life. You know, what they call the exempt firefighters. There's a lot of, it's been around for a long time. If somebody comes to Bethel, the bottom line is, as Dale said, come in here for the action. All right, they can develop their skills, they can move on to a career position, whether it's medical, firefighter, creative. In this case, they want to be a fire marshal, it's a good place to be, develop those skills. And yet we're grabbing their hours, their manpower to help us achieve our goal of keeping people safe prior to the rest. So I, I can say without any doubt that our, this program here has decided to make this a company. You go to these other towns, a lot of people do, and run with that. More stuff will run both towns.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Go to that.
Doug, didn't we talk about 5% of the total calls? It was 5%, I think, because we started talking about the 100 here based on what it is right now. We proposed 5% of what we.
Now, 5% would be 25 calls. Right?
No, not 5% of the 100.
So the total call.
It roughly, it comes roughly 100.
So 5%, including EMS, whether you're a firefighter or EMS, you have to make 5%.
All the calls, not just 5% of the fire.
So if you run 2,000 calls that year, they have to make 100.
And the number for Bethel actually came out to be 113 as opposed to the 100.
At 5%.
So just on the flip side, for Stony Hill, right, because the call bounds a little bit lower. The numbers are like 1,300 EMS, around 300 fire, so that works out to be about 80 calls you would have to. Whereas currently, Stony Hill's program, you have to make 50 calls, but you also get points. I think it's a total of 100 points, 50 are called and the other 50 are attending meetings, drills, training, you know, public relations, and then you get to that 100.
Well, the one thing is obvious, there are so many calls where both departments respond. Or are these all first calls or are these total calls? Yeah, because I guess what I'm saying is a lot of the Stony Hill guys have ample opportunity to respond to calls because they respond to Bethel calls, too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Because I, I guess what I'm saying is should, should Stony Hill be 80 calls and Bethel be 100 or should it be 100 for everybody? Because there's probably ample opportunity. I'm just asking the question. Yeah.
Some would, some would. There's a lot of nuances, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Easy to administer. It's gotta be easy to tick off what you've done and accountable. The other focus we had at the commission was to make sure it was doing fire calls, not going to meetings and bake sales and things like that. And it was valuable, valuable give back that's standing up.
Well, and it's one of the comments, to select one Jersey's point, and I'm not speaking for him, but. I don't think it's an issue with what we're spending so much as in having criteria, criteria, having tracking, having, making it legit.
Yes.
Yeah.
The thought was to, to modernize it a little bit, too. Bethel had a very staggered thing. Most departments adopted the state maximum out of the gate and had very little, you know, it was like one year service, you could run the max. Bethel had a 10-year run to make the $1,000.
Right.
250 bucks. No one's gonna go sign up for this for 250 bucks.
Did you pick two years? Did you pick two years because of, that's when somebody's really trained up and ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you currently get 1,000. You're looking for an extra 1,000.
You currently get 1,000 if you have 10 years in it to make the.
So do you have like what the actual cost you're projecting to be to the town, the additional cost?
We had, both of our, we had the total. So something, the total was very similar. There's, there's. 20, 25 each.
25,000.
25 members in each of them, so 50 members though.
Did Brad look at these numbers at all or?
This is just, this is just ours. Also, Brad's on the case. I only have two. Like, this is our 10, 5, 6, 5 and 10, 2, 5 numbers. This is current. And this is the one.
Yes, this is.
Put together.
Correct. We're starting. Yeah, right now, it's, what is this, 24?
Out of town members who qualify, but didn't get anything.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that's going to town.
So Tom, what I have here from you. What is this, from 23 to 24, there were, basically it was $25,000 for everybody, right?
Yeah, the last three, probably almost every year if you go back even further, the total tax abatement that the town put out was about 25,000 for both departments combined every year. The last three years it was, I know years before was about 25, so that's.
Does Stony have a lot less? Because I've got 17, just not here with 10.
Yeah, so this year Stony Hill had 15 members that were eligible. So again, right, so it's between 250, 500, 1,000, so all depends, you know, where that member lies there. I think we have like 10 of them had 10 years of service, three of them had six to 10 years, so they got 500, and two had two to five years. So.
And none of that group was any out of town who didn't get anything.
There was, I believe, three that were from out of town that were eligible.
Yeah, but they didn't get it.
Right. And there was a couple others, another five or so that. You know, made the calls but weren't eligible either because they weren't there for two years yet, or they don't have a tax line.
And do you guys have a cap on that for sure? Like, is there like a fully staffed membership number?
I think in our bylaw, it's like 100 members or something, or 100, you know, like 75 EMTs and 150, it's some crazy number that.
We're not getting to that.
We're not getting to that.
But they, I may, Tom, there's a point here, which is that the. The people don't qualify, especially on a Bethel side. It's not just the people who live out of town, so included, it's the people that don't have the time. This case, two years, not a case. Up to two, two to five, five to 10. People don't get that, that you're coming to a lot of calls, they're not getting anything. And a lot of them, you know, just don't qualify for benefits because they don't have any taxable part. And that's a big portion of the fire company. Even adults don't have it. I just give myself an example, you know, all my, all my favorites are my businesses. I do have property. So there's a lot of people that qualify that aren't getting anything in trouble, we want.
That begs the question, I think, though. Like, we, we've talked about this a number of times, whether we stick with a tax abatement or whether we're doing a paper call. Whether trying, like trying to do something more combination, like stick with this, but then go, because to raise this to 2,000 and give it to everybody right out of the hopper, it's pretty significant. Like, when we're talking about the budget, like trying to build our budget forward to increase volunteerism, it's a big chunk versus going to a paper hall incentive where now you're giving something to those folks who don't have any tax liability. Yeah, who don't tax liability. Because we can do an interlocal agreement with Danbury. I've kind of talked to them about it a little bit up there. It's possible. But some of those kids aren't gonna have any tax liability.
If you, right, worked at the call, number of people in Bethel that made the 100, like, let's just say 100 fire calls. It's 15, inconsistent for the last few years. Let's say you went to the paper call, that would equal the same number that we're paying out on the tax. So, you know.
But everybody would get.
Right. Well, yeah, if we were to get it for that top 100, people that hit 100 or above, it would be about 25,000. But obviously, with the paper ball, everybody would qualify. Well, I should say, everybody that met that threshold is qualified. That's not, the threshold is not gonna change. It doesn't do us, do us any good to pay somebody who doesn't have a full scare. They gotta meet the threshold. This is due to choose, so you've got to get the wagon size. So whoever you looked at, a combo system, not a bad idea either.
Is it taxable property? So like, if you have a younger person who just owns a car in their name, so they can get the tax paid on their car.
Most don't own the cars.
I'm just, yeah, I'm not. Yep. Don't ever take offense at what I say. I'm a guy who thinks about everything, right? I was a detective for how many years? I took at every angle, you know what I'm saying? I want to help you guys and I want to see you guys get something. But I don't want to start something that's gonna fail either. And I think, you know, like before, like for myself, before I commit to anything, I'd want Brad Herring to tell me. You know, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk to Brad and say, Brad, you know, what, what are the numbers here? What does this mean? You know, and, you know, maybe it's something that we phase in over two years. This year, it's gonna start at this number, next year, it's gonna start at that number. Sometimes like when we're trying to increase staffing on one of the departments, right? We have to do half a year staffing, so it's not just an initial big shock to the budget. But I think everyone's committed to doing something. We understand that. When you guys are providing a service to the town, you're saving money and more importantly, you're saving lives. I mean, you guys were at our branch the other day, up at, up in Stony Hill, you guys sent a truck up there. So we know you provide a valuable service.
Tom, I think, Tom, tell me, I'll scrub you down.
Well, I was just gonna say, you asked about tax, you know, so if somebody, if someone, somebody's eligible for $500, right? They've been there for six years, they, they're eligible for 500, but their tax liability is $200, they only get the 200, just because they operate, that's very nice.
Yeah.
So, and I'll just, this is my last piece to say, this is. So I'm an advocate for all this, but like I said to Dan, and it says the fire commission. I think you gotta look at it one of two ways. Either you keep it as a tax abatement program that the state, right? State statute allow you to do, which is the maximum $2,000. But then again, when you do that, right, it can only be for people that have a tax liability. Or you go away from that so that you get people who don't have a tax liability or live out of town, you can eliminate that. And just do a similar program with either the 1,000 or 2,000 based on the call volume. But it's just a, it's just a stipend program where you takes that tax piece away. The way the IRS works now and the way the laws are, you're really not getting a tax abatement. You're literally getting a check every year that you can either pay your taxes with or go on vacation because of the way the IRS rules are. So.
Chief, you're talking about getting a 1099 from the town.
There, there are currently no.
No, but you're saying rather than a tax abatement, get a 1099.
Yeah, so I, I guess that, that would probably have to happen if it's not considered a tax abatement, you'd never get it.
The only thing we would have to look at is payroll taxes and laws because now we're paying you for hourly service. So we would have to see what the, the tax liability.
We used to get it like that. We used to get the, a check, but they take your taxes out of it.
The IRS changed that ruling.
Right.
So now what you're saying, as soon as the ruling is, you would get a 1099, but it would be.
Your responsibility.
Or you would just take care of it.
If it's a tax abatement program like it currently is, the current way it is, the IRS, their current ruling, I believe, is that they don't take the taxes out.
But if we give you a stipend.
But if you do a stipend, I think then it might become a 1099. And that, you'd have to check with Brad or somebody, yeah.
I would.
So you don't say, well, you need to do it the way, the way we have it now and increase it, but it's only for the people that have a tax.
No, because the type of, the type of, they don't take taxes out. But if we don't do it as a tax abatement, we don't do it under the statute, we just say, all right, we're gonna give everybody a paper call, 1099, a number. Then, yeah, it might.
Well, they might ask to pay taxes.
Right.
I don't know if the town would have.
No. They would have. Yeah.
Would, would you want the fire commission to prepare a spreadsheet of all the available people similar to this who are eligible? And maybe put a check mark next to their name that they're in town, out of town? And.
Because right now, we just have the ones who are.
Right, in town and, and. Basically have them, give us the bottom line of what it would cost the town as proposed.
May, maybe wait, so they're not duplicating efforts 100 times and we keep asking questions. Maybe just wait for Brad to get back from vacation and have Brad ask what questions he needs to tell us what the cost is. I mean, he is the, you know, controller for the town and he probably has more experience with numbers than any of us, so.
Well, they gotta provide him the numbers of people.
He might want other numbers. And what I'm saying is rather than constantly calling them and bothering them, he may say, I don't need, you know, he. That's just my suggestion, just let Brad, because when's Brad back?
End of the week, or actually Monday.
I mean, Brad could talk to Doug or Tom, and Tom could talk to Doug and just, you know, just figure out what numbers he needs so he can come up with real numbers for us.
So, but, but it sounds like the, I think the, the big thing that you're looking for is, is to have this start at two years, not be graduated, let it be the max it's supposed to be. It sounds like we're gonna have to discuss whether that's 1,500 or 2,000. If we're gonna want to do other things. If we're going to want to do other things, because this seems to be a, a big, but we'll let Brad give us the numbers. Um, I mean, the way I think we would proceed is get the numbers from Brad and then on our next meeting. Um, decide if we want to push through changing the ordinance, which would require a public hearing after that. Then we'd act on it, and we'd have thirty day, thirty-one days to wait, I think it's a procedure. So.
So, so we'd have to go to the board of finance first.
Actually, you could, I don't know that we do, board of finance would make input at the public hearing, right? How's that work? For an ordinance, we make the ordinance, it's not.
Yeah, but the.
I'll say we want the board of finance on board. There's no form of, there's no formal.
Says there's no money for.
No, no, I, I, what I'm telling you, there's no formal place in the procedure for the board of finance. I don't think to give it to them, we'd have to just give it to them and do a referral sometime.
Is this the formal, is this the formal piece of paper? Like, you guys, this is the policy that you've come up with, that you handed me? Do we have a?
No, we would have to.
Well, we push forward. You know, you know what I think would be really helpful for us, so we can get this done? Send your actual written rules and how you want this to appear. To Mary and then she could forward it to us, so we could actually read it, so we all know exactly.
What we proposed?
What the requirement, yeah.
Okay, that was an emotion that we, we moved that as a, you have that already.
Yes, yes, it's a motion with the highlighter on.
With the highlighter on.
Going on the other page back there would be. Five percent of the call volume, four staffing hours equals one hour. Two thousand at two years, and members with twenty-five years total service eligible opportunity. I mean, so it's easy, it's pretty easy to craft over our ordinance and. It's just we'd have to come up with what the number is. Right. No, because we'd have to, we'd have to include something in here by doing an interlocal agreement with Danbury or whoever it is. But with, the other thing, and Danbury doesn't have one for theirs, doesn't, doesn't. So we can do an interlocal agreement with Danbury, but they don't have a tax abatement, or they do for volunteers, they do one? Okay.
They're in the process of doing it now.
They're processing it now, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Asked on the committee last night.
That's what you're going to vote on, okay?
The ad hoc board consented to the city council last night, and it passed it.
Okay. So Brad will contact you guys, get the exact numbers wherever he stands. Um, we'll go through with your motion and craft what this would look like, and then offer to Danbury and see where we stand. We get back next meeting and see if we can make the next step. Am I missing anything?
Well, the discussion with Brad also about the, the incentive program to, you know, just pay them a, per call or.
I think, I think the chief said paying per call is going to be way more expensive to pay per call.
He said about the same, right?
He thought the same, so about the same.
Yeah.
If you, if you had that hundred, call.
Yeah.
So you don't get paid until you hit a hundred calls, you get paid per call is what you're saying?
Yeah, it would, it wouldn't help us, because it wouldn't get everybody ten bucks per call and then we could ten dollars a year, yeah.
I just think paying per call is just going to be such a nightmare, keep track of everything.
You know what, they, they do it in Newtown, and they've done it for four years, fifty years over there, I'm proud of it. And there's a, departments through fifteen hundred fire calls, they have five separate corporations over there. And the commissioner in each firehouse is, is by, um, ordinance is responsible.
Yeah.
For submitting that document to the town and, and certifying it.
Well, I mean, the other question is whether we, like, Tom, or whether we keep a tax abatement or not? Or whether we do some sort of, just a straight out incentive program, do ten ninety-nine, because the whole point is we want to really incentivize people to make calls. And if the tax abatement isn't really incentivizing young guys to get in on it and do it. And why do it? I, I see our, our former training captain.
Sorry, I don't, I don't think it's my question, I don't know if I'm lost.
Like, I just, like.
Oh, I know, I know.
I, I could defer to that, but just one thing, what, what you're alluding to, we came up last night, Danbury. And, um, so biggest question was, you know, who's going to do all this accounting and work? And, and of course, the answer was each of the six individual corporations, because it's a big celebration of fire companies. And they said, well, you know, how legal is that? Are we going to accept that document? Is it going to be legitimate? Well, each one of those six corporations over there are active, five oh one C three or something similar corporations. And then the insurance that covers those corporations is annually, uh, looked at by the insurance companies. And you have a fiduciary responsibility as the chief officer of that fire company or the president. To sign off on that information that's being submitted to the city. And yet, and then the insurance companies look at those documents to make sure that they are legal. And that they're accurate, because if they're not, they gotta pay a big claim on that. So looking at that, both, both the fire companies here are corporations, um, we're both insured. We both have very strict fiduciary responsibilities. I think any information we did provide you would be pretty accurate. And legit, and I, I get where you're coming from. You know.
I'm not saying that you guys want to be accurate, I'm just saying it's a pain in the back. You know, Brett, Brett's gonna, you know, we're gonna cut checks for, you know, how do you get called? You know what I mean? It's just.
So just, it's very simple, we have our, our EMS chart program can run a report about how many calls somebody did. And in the fire program, you can run a report that tells you, cause everyone gets one point per call in, in their attendance. So we could run a very simple report, it'll list everybody and how many calls they made for the year, or so it's.
I guess what I'm trying to say, I just prefer doing a tax abatement, it's a lot easier. Again, I'm just saying, it's, it's just, it's just a lot easier. You're right, you made a hundred calls. Whatever the number is, at the end of the day, whether it's a tax abatement or ten ninety-nine, as opposed per call, pay per call. I just think it's a lot easier, just if you made the hundred calls, here's where you're at, you know, because.
The only big problem with that is the, the younger guys, or even maybe some of the older folks, don't have a two thousand dollar tax bill.
Well, I just said, or ten ninety-nine.
Or, or ten nine, he said, okay, okay.
I just, the only thing I'm at, the only thing I'm questioning is, and again, don't wipe my head off, Tom. I'm just, you know. It, it would just seem to me to like get the full two thousand, you know, maybe the full two thousand starts after five years of service. You know, I remember when I was on the police department, I didn't hit top step until I hit five years of service. It doesn't mean you can't bump the two fifty up from the two to five years of service, but at least, you know what I mean? See some time before you go to the two thousand. So maybe you say two to five, you get a thousand, once you get over five years, you make your two thousand, you know?
That's just.
Father did for the people that already have their.
Yeah, of course, you wouldn't, you wouldn't start like, if you've been here five years, we're not going to say it starts now and you gotta do five years before you get it. I mean, that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm saying is if you have a new member who starts slow. Once you hit two years to five years, you get a thousand bucks, once you're over five years, you know, you're entitled to the two thousand. It's not only about cost, it's just about time in and building experience and, you know, giving incentives to stay in the program and, you know. It's just, it's just, I guess that just comes from my background, you know, that's the way we always did it, that it came. You know, even the pensions, I didn't get vested in my pension for, I think it was, I can't remember if it was five or ten years, I think it was five years that we got vested in our pensions. But, you know, that's all. Again, it's not against a member with two years, but, you know, to go from two fifty to a thousand is not a bad start, right?
I, I guess, um, the one thing I would, I would consider thinking about is that. We want to incentivize that newly trained two-year person, like, we want them to be, it's not, it's not like, we, we don't know if we're going to keep them for. Four years, five years, ten years, I don't know that we want to re- reward the longevity the same way as we want to reward, reward attending and showing up and. Being at the fire call when they're young and trained, like, I almost, to be honest, I, I don't love the idea about doing it for somebody twenty-five years and on. I'd rather have active, I'd like all the money to go to active people making calls, every dollar. You know, we're appreciative of somebody who stays twenty-five years, but, you know, getting a, getting a tax break for life.
But they still gotta make the hundred calls.
Not when they retire.
Not after twenty-five years.
After twenty-five years, they're retired.
If they, if, so, so after twenty-five years, if they made a hundred calls for the whole twenty-five years, each year, they're in.
Not necessarily, you just said they had to be twenty-five year member, so some years they may not make the calls.
The state statute, right, the state statute that allows the volunteer tax abatement program. Has a line in there that if, if it's, if you have twenty-five years of service and you're a retired member. Be eligible for the two thousand. So that, there's a state statute that kind of gives you the guidelines of where you can go with this program.
You couldn't.
Yeah, you, the town, a town could enact that.
Yeah, this is always.
Twenty-five years of service and retire, retired member.
So, I, I don't want to. End this without talking to the, the former training captain so anxiously.
I don't, I don't, I'm a little reluctant to speak just because I, I believe the proposal that I brought to the fourth fire commission, this panel, this recommendation to be selected. But I can offer some perspective, if I may. I'm, uh, in this case, I'll be speaking from my personal experience. I don't want to speak officially on behalf of the two departments, I think it's a good recommendation that the departments be, and collectively. Uh, whether or not it's what you have in front of you or just review it one more time. A couple of things, one, I moved to this town, I, this is going to sound so conceited. I'm your ideal, I'm your ideal volunteer in town.
Yeah.
I'm in my thirties, I bought a home here, I plan to stay here. I did not join the volunteer fire service for any compensation. In fact, I was floored when I found out that we are truly a volunteer fire department. There is no, uh, well, there is a, a tax incentive that Yale has coordinated to. Not well, I don't know if Stony Hill does. I just hit five years in the department, which means up until this point, I've received a check every year for two hundred fifty dollars. I was a top ten responder for those five years. Didn't matter to me, I was, it's always helpful. Volunteer firefighters pay to play in their community. Most departments, you have to be a resident or a neighboring resident in order to be a member. So I'm paying taxes proudly in this town, I will, I'm, I'm happy to support taxes. Uh, but now having a family and stuff. Any, any more that can go my way definitely helps my family for the time that's gone. My proposal that I had written in two thousand twenty-two, uh, was based off of hours and not necessarily points. Because, uh, you can go on a call for wires down and you can be there six hours. Or you could go on an automatic fire alarm for fifteen minutes, but that point is still a point. And so my proposal initially was based off of time that was tracked, which we can also do through our paperwork. Uh, because there are members who put in a significant amount more time, potentially, even though they may have less hours. Plus, Monday night training, uh, additional special drills, it's all time away from family, the sweat equity that our members put in. Um, and it's a remarkable amount when you look at our end of year totals, tens of thousands of hours that our members put in. I belong to a department for nineteen years where I grew up, um, on the east side of the state, and they had adopted a pay, a, a paper call model. They're no longer a volunteer fire department, because the amount just ha- having to go up and up and up to make it worth people the time. Uh, I am all for incentivizing young new members. But I find that a lot of those young new members come here, don't need much. I don't think they join looking for the money, I think they do it because it is cool, exciting thing to do and hopefully leads to a career. And if they leave, then we did our job in setting off someone on a, on a good path, but they gave us their time while they were here. I find the tax abatement program, and it's not that we came up with this idea, it was on a state level. Because Connecticut was kind of behind the ball compared to other states. New York state, New York state can get education incentives, if you go to state schools there, you hit fifty years, you get a gold watch from the state's volunteer fireman association. Like, there's some really impressive things that the state does, plus you get a, uh. Uh, a state income tax abatement in, in New York. Not the case here, Connecticut went with the tax abatement model and left it on the municipalities. Uh, to be able to increase that to two thousand without the tax liability of having to do a ten ninety-nine. Um, I fear that sometimes if you go to a point-based system. We have retirees here, which we are incredibly grateful to have, because they usually staff the daytime, uh, weekday hours. They're also the ones that are going to have two hundred, three hundred calls at the end of the year. And I did see in my previous department resentment for people that would go home with five thousand dollar checks. And yet, the thirty-something or young parents or something would get a couple hundred bucks, because that was the best they could do. Whether that's right or wrong, I think a balance between the two is definitely worth exploring. Initially, uh, in my previous proposal, there's a discussion of credits. Um, because I know that if you want to incentivize people in town, and I don't know enough about tax liability and tax law. But if there is an opportunity to remove that pay-to-play, uh, aspect of being a member of town. A credit towards parks and recs, so that young family members who are volunteers can help their kids go to a camp or something. Removing, uh, or giving a credit towards transfer station. Getting a, even just an annual membership to the field house, these are little things that I think are worth exploring as an incentive or retention program. Um, from a recruitment standpoint.
So I want to, I'm sorry, I'm going to wind it up. Sure, because we're, we're.
Sorry, I'm talking a lot.
No, no, but we're going totally into like, hey, listen, we're doing this because there's all firemen here.
Sure.
We're going totally in the public hearing territory, but I, I've got your, your whole thing, I'm going to share it with, with everybody here. Because from all those incentive things, it's a big, it's a big knock, and there are a ton of things we should and can be doing.
And. I don't want to undermine the fire.
No, I know, you know, I know. Well, with this, we're, I mean, we're talking kind of about fire, we're talking about fire abatement, or a big tax abatement right now. Understood, we have all the other stuff, which we are on board of doing.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
The only thing with the two thousand a year for life, after you retire. You know, you're going to have to have an actuary look at that and see what the long-term. I mean, that's a, and again, it's just a big commitment. You know, that's a big commitment going into the future. So, you know, you gotta have an actuary look at that, can't just, you know, commit to something without knowing what the future costs to the town are as well.
That gets back on to like what the longevity program was.
Right, I think, and, and again, you know, it's. I guess, I, I just don't know enough about it, I mean, that's, you know, if someone's a life member and they're still a member, then I get it. You know, the two thousand makes sense, you know, maybe they have to go to meetings if they can't go to calls, maybe they gotta help people train or something, but. We just have to really know what that looks like in the future.
So we'll, so kind of where we were, we'll work with Brad, working with you on the numbers.
Yeah.
And we'll see, yeah, see what it all looks like. And then on the next, next, when we can get together, get together and make some firm.
Yeah, we can.
Thoughts, where do you want to go?
We could even do a special meeting. You know, just dedicate it to talking to you guys about it, maybe you bring the fire commission. If they want to come.
Okay. Terrific, and with that, I mean, I, so I feel like we're, we're fine moving forward and we will move forward with something this year. I think we've shown a lot of commitment, we want to do something to incentivize volunteerism. Uh, and we're open to a lot of those other things too, I think there's like, things we can do at Parker Rec, all that, yeah, I think there's a lot of options. Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, so, um. Okay, next up is a consideration of a designated one early voting poll location for the twenty twenty-five municipal election. I believe what. I, I, the way this actually should read, I believe, is that we are, we are choosing not to allow additional locations. That's what we're actually doing, and the way the, the, the way the statute reads is, um, we can, we can do a public hearing. Or we can go straight to a town meeting, um, whether or not we want to do an additional location, but we shall have a town meeting at the end of the day. This is one where we'd hope they would have changed the board of selection, they never did. We actually have to have a town meeting and notice to say, would you not recommend, recommend an additional early voting location? So what, um, what we're speaking of, um, now I'll make them, first of all, any questions on that? Cause that's why I truly did this last time, so, um, I move that we. Uh, set a special town meeting for Thursday, July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, at six P M in meeting room A of the municipal center. To, how do I want to say this, um, uh, to, to, to decide that we will not be adding an additional early voting location. That worked out, well, I said it correctly.
Um, right, so the purpose of the special town meeting is to determine whether we need additional voting locations.
Right. Right, okay.
I'll second the motion.
So, yeah, but is, I guess that's what will be the question, is whether or not we need an additional. But, okay, so we got that, uh, we have a second?
And just, what was the date again?
It's, uh, Thursday, July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, six P M, meeting room A. To decide if we are going to have an additional early voting location.
You have the, the Burko's question. So our, so, um, so the statute requires that, like I say, if I need a determination as to whether they need additional voting places.
Right.
So, um, the question was going to be, I'm starting to, I don't have. I don't have it in front of me, but I can get it. Okay. Um, I would have it either with me, but it's.
The, the question should be whether or not that Beth, kind of Beth was going to add an additional early voting location.
You want?
Right?
The question I think was, um, that based on the recommendation of the board of selectmen, that there will be just one voting location.
Okay, that's where I was trying to go with first of that, okay.
Right. So that, um, it gets awkward when you. Without it being a guess, it's almost definitive. So we have some experience down these, um, voting that we did for the two thousand twenty-five presidential primary. Um, and then we determined after that special town meeting, it was voted that a single, single location will be acceptable. So it looks like we have to keep doing that for each election. Until they revise the statute. And right now the legislative body was this town meeting, um, not the board of selectmen. So we can need to go through this process. So I believe the question was going to be, and I'm sorry, we have it in front of us right now, but, um, that the recommendation is.
We have only the.
We have a single, one and only voting location for early voting.
Okay.
In, in the town of that.
Right. Because, because the way the statute reads is that we're supposed to decide whether or not we're going to have an additional. By saying single, we're covering that. So let me, let me reset the motion, just to make sure we're right. Um, I move that we set a special town meeting for Thursday, July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five at six P M, meeting room A at the municipal center to recommend that we have a single early voting location for municipal election two thousand twenty-five.
Let's take action on the question of whether we have.
Take action on, okay. So amended. All right.
On the recommendation of the board of selectmen, that we have a single.
Okay. Any more questions, Rich?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so, um, we are, uh, I move that we table the approval of abatement of taxes for Bethel Housing Authority. And that was on the advice of the tax collector. Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, I move that we approve tax refunds, the amount of two thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Should we overpay them? Have a second, is that your name? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. I believe that's it. Is there anything else that we need to talk about to come before the mission? Or, or about it? Okay, I'll take a motion, Joe. On, second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carries here, adhering at seven fifty-three.